I'm so glad you're okay. Hi Rhonda.
Welcome back.
I just want to get my bookmarks guys and then I'm good to go.
I don't know that she can.
Okay, Russ is out there and we've got Steph out here.
He's just...
Laura's here.
Yeah.
Okay. I would pull, hang on, the...
They're gonna do, they're gonna do, they're gonna present first their item A, so you don't have to pull that.
Because I think they're gonna go, the, anything you want to pull, obviously.
Cora's here for item J, if you want to talk about communities and schools.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, maybe call J, call our J because they're all here to talk about that. That might be a good one to get a little publicity on.
India?
Mm-hmm.
Is here?
Okay. Oh, that's India.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I don't know, but I don't know if you can say anything?
I would, I think that then I would look like I was, no, I'm gonna, if she comes up and says something during the comments, that's fine with me.
Yes.
But, anyway, so.
If she wants to.
Yeah. If she wants to just say, "I'm gonna be running and I'm looking forward," you know. Alright, is everybody ready? Okay.
Wait one second.
We have, don't hit your head and knock yourself out. Cornea larycian and a contusion. Right, right. That'd make me feel like a great person if I did that to you. Okay.
I don't know that I would, Angie.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I didn't actually assign anybody to read the mission statement tonight. Does anybody on the board want to read it? You want me to? Angie, why don't you do it?
Okay.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. You have to get to it, I know, just...
No, I have it memorized.
Of, of course, I forgot.
The Waterloo Schools' community commits to a comprehensive system of education and supports to assure that each and every child, student, or child will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much. You did that very well for being memorized. That's awesome. Alright, the next item on our agenda then is Exhibit A. This is a Waterloo Schools Foundation report, and I'm gonna ask Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, to come forward and give us some background.
Thank you, Shanley. We are so excited that this year, the Waterloo Schools Foundation is celebrating an incredible milestone in our community. The organization is celebrating its one millionth dollar donation to our school district, and I know if the public could be heard cheering from home right now, it would reverberate. It is an amazing growth of this private-public partnership, and we are fortunate to be under the direction of Emily Hansen, its Executive Director, who is going to share with us the incredible work that the board and all involved in this organization have done for our district. Emily?
Thank you so much, Tara. My name is Emily Hansen. I am the Executive Director of the Waterloo Schools Foundation. We are a public nonprofit organization that raises money for the public schools in Waterloo. Over the last five years, we have given over a million dollars. On June 21st, we approved our millionth dollar to the district, and that money goes to three main categories. The first are innovative learning grant programs. We have provided 75 teacher grants in the last five years through this program. We have also provided student grants through our Young Scholars Program. It has been 31 grants to students benefiting 285 students directly through this program, and we have done eight large-scale district initiatives. See, these are programs that we have partnered with Dr. Lindeman and Shanley, who serve as ex-official members on our board, to offer the school district. And they're typically larger scale and have the potential to impact students all across the district. With me today, I have the President of my board, Mike Young, and I also have two very special guests, Mike Webb and Dan Webb. Back in April, we unfortunately lost the media specialist at Pointer Elementary School, Angie, and they both worked very hard to raise money in Angie's memory that have been dedicated to the Pointer Library. And so I invited them here today because they were one of the last donations that we received and allocated before this million gift was given. So I brought them here. If you guys have any questions for them or us, I would be happy to answer them.
Will you tell us a little bit more about the millionth celebration that's happening on Wednesday?
Yes, so this Wednesday, you're all invited. We are having a celebration just to recognize the amazing things that have happened in our schools and also with the Schools Foundation at 5:30 at Hoover Middle School. So, all are welcome to join. It's going to just be a celebration of the great things that have happened and kind of a recognition of where that money has gone. I may be the Director of the School Foundation, but there are 18 wonderful board members who support me, and over 1,000 people have donated towards this million dollars. So it's really a community effort and a collaborative effort, and it's just a way to recognize that.
What are your, what are your main fundraisers? I know there's a breakfast every year.
Yes, so we host the Sparking Academic Excellence Breakfast every April. It brings in between $40,000 and $50,000. And then the rest of our grant, or the rest of our funding, I should say, comes from grants and also community supporters and corporate sponsorships. So they are people who care about our schools and who support us accordingly.
Could we hear a little bit about the library, the donation in honor of Angie?
Yes, so Mike generously fundraised on his own, so this was not the School Foundation's effort. He fundraised over $1,300 for the Pointer Library in memory of Angie.
No, it was just support from friends and family. We got donations in lieu of memorials at the funeral and, of course, privately around the area as well. The Waterloo School Foundation did an incredible job helping facilitate it. It'd been a whole lot more difficult if I wanted to collect checks versus having it online format and, of course, you know, going through all the proper channels and stuff.
Mike, Angie was your sister, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Is there anything in particular that you think that Pointer will be doing, or do you know yet with, with this donation? Do they plan to put a plaque up in her honor, or do you know sort of what that, what that plan process is?
There was a, kind of a little monument that was donated by area media representatives, or area media.
Okay.
Teachers. So as far as an actual memorial goes, I don't think the money's going specifically to anything like that. Kind of hopefully not. I'd rather have the money go towards something that's a little more useful.
Excellent.
So hopefully books and just whatever they need. I, you know, we kind of directed it towards the library, but that means a whole lot of things nowadays.
Exactly.
Hopefully something that can help kind of pass along her tradition.
That's wonderful, and I appreciate knowing that, just so that we can honor her tradition and they can honor her tradition in the, in the way that you would intend. So that's wonderful.
In terms of the trajectory, to the trajectory, trajectory of the foundation, how many years has it been in existence now?
So the foundation has been around for seven years. We have been granting funds for five.
So how is it compared to other, and I know it was modeled after some other school foundations. How's the trajectory compared to those? Or haven't you made that comparison?
So believe it or not, we're actually considered to be a mid-sized school foundation, and I'm the only staff member, but there are quite a few in the country that don't even have a staff member. But compared to other mid-sized school foundations, we are well above the curve for granting funds. And I credit that a lot to the support that we have from the school board, the school district, and also the community.
Very good. Thank you for your efforts.
So I just want to make just a quick comment, and I am gonna speak at the, the celebration on Wednesday. But I think that for any viewers or people in the audience, a lot of times, the question will come up, why in the world would we have a, a group of people who just work to support one organization, the school district? And I think that the answer is really, it, the, the answer lies in the fact that if you have a strong school system, you have a stronger community. And so when we have all of these people donating hours and hours and working hard, hours and hours of time to support our kids, it's really because they know not only do the kids need it and deserve it, it's really a good thing for our community. So it, it's wonderful to have, to have Emily here and Mike and, and Angie's relatives here to, I mean, I think that's, that's fantastic. And they just represent such a broad group, and we are so lucky to have them because there are so many, there are so many school districts out there that do not have a foundation that, that works tirelessly to, to raise money on the students' behalf. So we, we will, we'll love you up on Wednesday even more, but I just want everybody else to know that this is, this is a, this is a big deal to have a foundation that supports us. We feel your support every day. Whether we talk with you every day, Shanley and I get the privilege of sitting on the, on the Foundation Board, not as voting members, but just get a chance to be there, and it really is, you can, you can feel the, the support. You absolutely can. So we thank you publicly for what you do, and, and what a great thing to have this, this millionth dollar celebration coming up so soon, within 48 hours, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and to have a million dollars in five years, to be, to be giving that, that's no small feat as well. So I echo Dr. Lindeman's comments of thanks, and we're very, very appreciative of all of the efforts and all the things that the foundation does, so.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have a big check if you guys would be willing to take a picture with us.
Oh, yeah. Tara's drooling right now. She loves that. I was gonna say, only if you brought a big check.
Let's, can we all go down and just do a picture in the front here? Tara, can we do a picture in the front, in the, in the middle? And let's have the whole board go. Yeah, I think it would be great. Pam, come on down too. Everybody. Let's just get the whole kit and kaboodle. Beth? Charles, Michael, come on down. Michael should be right in the front.
In the shirt.
Not trimming. Tripping him.
I just go back.
Why are you sitting there?
Thank you so much.
Do you want to sit up in your old seat?
Oh, my God.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you. It was for him.
I have two more quick notes.
Yes.
We sent out these impact reports to further show where the money has gone and to talk about some of the stories, the great things that are really happening in our schools. If anybody would like one, or if you didn't receive one, please let us know. I'd be happy to provide them. Also, if anybody is interested in donating to the Waterloo Schools Foundation, they can go to our website. It's wcsfoundation.org, or you can visit our Facebook page. That has more information as well. But we are still fundraising. This is the first million. There are more to come, and we are excited for the things to come as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We get to do, we get to do board celebrations, and I know this was set as a report, but I'm gonna count it as a celebration because it's worth celebrating, so yay. Thank you very much, all of you.
And so what I want, I wanted to say thank you also. But I know sometimes we have community members who want to support an academic project. I know sometimes students who want to go to certain camps and can't afford them. But we are 501(c)(3), so if they want to make a large donation and get a tax credit for it, you mean, let's just keep it real, people, you know, have to do that. Did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. So we are a 501(c)(3), so anybody who donates to us, it is tax deductible. You can give directly to the foundation, or you can choose to select a specific program, a specific school, like the Webb family chose to support Pointer's library. We are more than happy to accommodate that and to work with the people in the community. We really here are to serve the students, the teachers, and the community supporters. So we're happy to do that.
And I think the really cool part is when, when you, if you have money that you want to do something, maybe you have something in mind. Emily, because we work so closely together, she knows the things that are going on in our district, and so she can work with you to, you know, if you have a, if you want to provide scholarships for students, she can work with you and she can help you with opportunities. So I think that's the beauty of this. There's just, there's so many things going on, and Emily can kind of be a little bit of a conduit to help people support the things that mean a lot to them.
Yes, I'm more than happy to do that. That's a fun part of my job. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Great point, Rhonda. Thank you, and we'll see you Wednesday.
Absolutely.
The next item on our agenda then this evening is information from individuals and delegations. This is the time when people who wish to may address the school board. I would like to ask that if you do so, you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. And at that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. I'd also ask that you keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our kids and students. Avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district because personnel matters are confidential and need to be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. And finally, we do provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it's generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda this evening. But we will certainly try to help with information before or after the meeting if necessary, but we do need to proceed with the items on our agenda. So with that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board this evening to come forward and state your name and address, and you can have your three minutes.
My name is Ron Lepch. I live at 467 Devonshire. So you probably know what I'm interested in tonight about.
I sure do.
I kind of represent the neighborhood. It seems like when you guys donated a property out there for our holding pond, we were involved with you people back in, that was probably a year or two ago. But it's kind of interesting and, and kind of sad because in 1961, we built our house there, and you guys built the school several, several years after that. And so our kids went there through sixth grade. Now they're 50. So we went through quite a bit with you guys over a long period of time, different board members, and it was interesting. And now we'd like to see that it's put to rest, which is gonna happen, it sounds like, tonight. You guys are gonna approve the, I believe, 108,000 bid that I see in the paper that you guys were gonna, and we worked with people like Jim Ellis, who laid that out for eight lots you've got there that you can sell later on after you tear it down. So it's gonna be interesting to watch it tore down. Some of the questions that came from the neighbors, and if my three, if I, my three minutes are up, Jerry, I'll ask the rest.
Or you can hand me your piece of paper and I'll keep them.
Will the basement be removed? That was one of the questions, you know, completely, because that's got a basement underneath it. Will the concrete be completely removed? How, and, and maybe this is a little early, but are you people planning to sell the eight lots? Because when that was laid out, that was the kind of the intent is, when, when Jim Ellis laid that out was to give you guys something to pay for the demolition with, so. And we worked a little with Marty Midcap, but he is not here tonight, is he?
He is not.
Oh, okay, and he was the one that we worked a little bit with too, so. And, and some of the questions that come up, and I know they're a little premature. If you sell the lots, how will they be rezoned? You know, neighbors wondering what's gonna go in next. And it seems like when we ride around the neighborhood, we're always getting asked questions, but I said, "Why don't you come down to the board meeting and ask them yourself?" They're probably, probably out for supper or something. So that, my time is up.
No, you, you're good. You still have 30 seconds.
I still have 30 seconds?
I'll let you finish.
Okay, the other question was on this, on the card here. If you guys approve it, which we hope you do, will it be sotted and look nice, you know, before you sell the lots? And the other thing was, will, let's see what was on there. No, that's all. I think I got them all. Jerry, you here got any?
I can't think of any. You got, you hit it.
You hit it? Alright. Thank you, and I will say, I, I wrote down your questions, and I, I will let you know that I sit on the Facilities Committee, and many of those questions we have talked about within our group, but, but some of them I don't think have been decided, like the number of lots and some of that stuff. But I do want to make sure that you do understand that the basement will be removed in, in our abatement. I'm pretty sure that that's, we, we would never leave the basement. That'll all be, and it will be graded and taken care of so that it could be mowed, for sure. That I'm not so sure about, if it will be this in 18, in 17, it may be...
We, we have a Facilities meeting coming up this week. I don't know if that's on the agenda or not, but shortly after that.
We'll, we'll get you in touch with Ms. Arndorfer and Marty, and we'll get the answers to those questions the next time the Facilities Committee meets, and we'll get those answers for you.
Because I email Marty periodically.
Okay.
Should I just question, send my question to him?
Yep, that'd be great. Perfect. Alright.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks for coming tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Alright, then seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I didn't see your hand up.
India Park. Hi, good evening. My name is India Johnson, and I just want to let everyone know that I'm running for school board for District Four this year, for 2017. Angie kind of put me on the spot, but, but it's okay. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I have been in the Cedar Valley area for about 13 years, originally from Des Moines. I have two daughters who do attend the public school here, one at Irving and one at Central. I am currently actively employed at the Waterloo Public Library. I am technically technical support in addition to a lot of programming. So I do a lot of Roblox, Minecraft, teen and summer programming, and we kind of just ended. And with the new maker space that we have, I also do a lot of workshops there. I'm also very actively involved with our community from youth art team, which is started in 2010, so we've been actively involved with that. In addition to that, I've been helpful with Pedal Fest. It's been new this year with the Waterloo Public Library and the Police Department in doing the bike ride, which was incredible. With my church, with Christopher's, if you've ever had Soul Food Sunday, you've been doing that for about four years. So my involvement in the community has been incredible. But as far as running for school board this year, I just wanted to kind of be an advocate. I know I can advocate for my kids, and I do that all the time, being in their schools. But I also want to advocate for kids who don't have parents who can speak up. So I am hopefully looking forward to be able to do this and looking for the new year, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for introducing yourself.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, now since I clearly can't see behind the monitors, is there anybody else back there that I've missed that wishes to address the board? Alright, thank you then. We'll move on to our consent agenda. And this evening, it's a fairly lengthy agenda, but I am gonna read it out loud here for a minute. So Item B, which are the minutes of the July 10th, 2017 regular board meeting and the July 11th, 2017 special board meeting. Item C, which is personnel appointments and adjustments. Item D, which is bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item E, a grant from the Iowa Department of Education. Item F, a donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa. Item G, a donation from the Waterloo Schools Foundation. Items H, an open enrollment appeal. Item I, the Urban Education Network 2017-2018 membership dues. Item J, the Communities and Schools of Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding. Item K, the Cedar Valley Promise Empowerment Contract. And Item L, the Iowa Voluntary Preschool Contract. Can I get those items on the table?
Some would.
Thank you, Jesse, and a second? Awesome. And then are there any items that members wish to have removed?
Item C, Charlie. C, Echo. And J, Juliet.
Items C, E, J. Anyone else? Or anything else? I was gonna pull J, so, great. Alright, well, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, and I'm gonna read the items again. B, D, F, G, H, I, K, and L, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to Item C on page six, the Personnel Appointments and Adjustments.
I move the Board of Education to approve the personnel items as listed.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angie. And discussion?
Yeah, school starts next week.
It does.
How many classrooms are we gonna have without any teachers?
We're not gonna have any classrooms without any teachers. We will have a certified classroom, a teacher to meet every student in every classroom. They may not be permanent contract teachers, but there will be a certified teacher there. Since our last meeting, we've had quite a flurry of activity. I always say to the board that the staffing process is very fluid, but wow. We've had quite a month. We've had a number of leave of absence, a number of late retirements, but we've also had a number of hires. So typically, we're at a dozen or so about this time of year. We get those last hires in. Since we've met last, we've gone from 18 up to 40 vacancies. Tonight, we're at 13. Of those 13 vacancies, seven of them are special ed positions, and six of them, 6.2 of them, are in one particular building. But we're working to support Stephanie in this process. We are really trying to look at this systemically to figure out how to approach these late hired, late resignations. And Dr. Lindeman has already started a conversation with our teacher leadership on ways that we can more effectively manage some of this, the, the late resignations. I hate to mention the term "teacher shortage," but it's all over the nation, and it's definitely starting to show up here. We've never experienced it as, as, probably as significantly as we have this hiring season, but it's out there. I've been working with and talking with you and I. I've been working with and talking with you and I, because they're the Teacher Training Institution of Record in our state, and they're getting the same calls from other superintendents and HR directors as the call I made. We also have some pretty exciting projects going in some Grow Your Own teacher programs, which you'll be hearing more about, and I think that's going to help us considerably with some of the filling of these positions. Dr. Lindeman and I have talked about a way to encourage and incentivize special ed teachers, because that seems to be the major shortage. It has been a shortage area identified by, from the Board of Educational Examiners for as long as I can remember. And it has always been the most difficult jobs to hire here in our district as well. So, we've been talking about, and Jane, Dr. Lindeman has already moved forward with some strategies to incentivize special ed teachers to consider that very highly needed area. So, that's kinda where we are. We will have teachers. We're still working on a few, and principals are interviewing everyone that they can. I also need to say that our building principals are committed to hiring the brightest and the best. And so, they're not hiring individuals to fill spots. They're vetting the candidates thoroughly and determining who they would offer a contract to. I know we've had some kindergarten jobs that have had twenty-eight applicants, and they're going through them carefully to make sure they pick the right one for our kids. So, they're not taking the shortage lightly. They're doing their best to vet the candidates and only offer contracts to the best. We have a substitute pool that will support us as we move forward with the district, with the beginning of the school year, but we still want to make sure we have highly qualified and properly certified individuals as soon as we can in each of those classrooms.
Is there any external forces or internal forces that you can identify that have contributed to this large number of changes at the last minute, be it, you know, certification changes in either Iowa or other states, or that draw students?
I think Dr. Lindeman would probably wanna speak to that. She had an opportunity to meet with the UEN superintendents, and they talked about that. So, maybe if you could...
Yeah, we did talk about that. The UEN stands for Urban Education Network, and it is the biggest eight districts in the state of Iowa, of which we are one. And then, it also has associate members, which is the next ten largest districts. And so, we were all kinda, all the superintendents were kinda sitting around talking about this very thing. One of the activities we did on our agenda was to go around and talk about how many positions we were still seeking. And I was nothing short of shocked by the numbers of, you know, I remember Dubuque at that time was looking at, I believe they had sixteen, and this was just last week. So, they had sixteen at that time, we had twenty. Des Moines had, you know, a huge number. I can't actually remember exactly what it was, seventy-something. I don't actually remember, but it was dozens and dozens and dozens of teachers. So, I kept thinking, if you added up the eight largest districts, and you added up all the teachers that we were seeking, it was really probably two hundred teachers that we were shy. So, we did turn to the conversation to look at, you know, what are some of the things? You know, we had, we know that not as many people are going into teaching. So, that's really the crux of your question. I think nationally, the number is that thirty-five percent reduction in the number of people who are going into a teacher prep program at the college level. So, you know, I think there's a variety of things. Teaching is not for the faint of heart. It just is not. And so, you know, sometimes people will look at it and say, "Gosh, it's, you know, the glorious pieces of it. It's nine months, and this and that." It is a difficult job, and I think that it is, you know, kids are coming with more diverse needs, which is a good thing, you know? Kids are different, but it's not necessarily a bad thing, but it, you know, there's a variety of languages. And, you know, sometimes teachers feel ill-prepared because of the diverse population. You know, I know that one of the things came up, that came up before, were, you know, kids have some special behavior needs, and sometimes teachers, you know, may struggle with that or feel ill-prepared. And so, we talked about what we could do to make sure that we have the best-prepared, the brightest staff. And it really comes down to staff that feel valued, they feel supported, they feel prepared, they feel like they can get their questions asked, or, you know, answered. And really, it's not just by the superintendent, or by the school board, or by their principal. It really is the people that are walking the walk with them every single day. Teachers that feel like they are part of their, we call it professional learning communities, but their, you know, their grade-level team, third-grade team, or maybe the math teachers at the high school. I'll just, this is my last comment on this, and then anybody else can chime in. But I was just talking with somebody else who shared that another, one, a teacher had switched from one district to another district, and the reason they switched is they didn't feel like they had a team that was supporting them. It actually had nothing to do with the students, it had nothing, they just didn't feel like their grade-level team was supportive. So, there's a variety of reasons, but I think, you know, I think it's a challenging profession, and I think that's really what we came down to at the state level, anyway.
So, do we do exit interviews?
We did do exit interviews. We do. We actually, last year, had someone else come in, a third party come in and do those. And they met with as many people, as many face-to-face, or we did some phone calls. And we actually connected with dozens of teachers who were willing to. And we looked for trends. The person who did that for us scripted everything out, and then we did kind of a thematic analysis. And there were some that, you know, some, there were a variety of reasons. Some were logistics. My spouse got transferred, or I wanted to move back home, or, and if back home isn't the Cedar Valley, they left the area. There were, you know, there were comments of, you know, I didn't necessarily feel prepared to teach in a high-poverty, highly-diverse district. That did show. And so, we looked at, you know, what do we do through our teacher leadership and compensation, our TLC grant, to make sure that people are prepared. We did a survey this spring, and for the first time, our new teachers, our brand-new teachers, and actually Stephanie helped with the survey, but one of the things that we were thrilled is that every, a hundred percent, and I mean a hundred percent, of our new teachers said that they were happy with their decision, they felt supported, and they were happy to be in Waterloo. Now, that doesn't mean that they may not have left for a life circumstance, but one hundred percent, and we had never had that before. So, that was a good thing for us to see. Bev, Charles, anybody else who wants to chime in on that?
We take the climate surveys, the building climate surveys very seriously. And Dr. McNulty is instrumental in providing feedback to the building principals regarding the results of those surveys and building plans around things we can do to enhance the climate in buildings.
You know, I would echo what Dr. Smith and Dr. Lindeman said. I mean, right now, I don't think we've ever had such engagement in our planning process, such awareness of district initiatives and goals. And I think it goes back to, again, our first-year teachers last year and the support they received. And a lot of that goes also to Ms. Mohorn, who has been working with the mentor program. And I think that mentor program's been growing, and I think it's becoming highly effective with coaches coming in, supporting both the teacher and the culture around the teacher's instruction.
We'll be doing the interviews. Once we get the hiring, get the school year started, we'll connect with those individuals face-to-face or by phone to kinda get some feedback from them. And I, because of the results from last year, I'll probably have someone else come in again and do that, so it's not talking to the district, just to get a feel for if there's anything that we're missing as to why they're leaving. They typically will give us a reason, but...
There was nothing really shocking in last year's, but that doesn't mean, and we had done surveys before that, but this was the first time that we had done such a broad scale. And answering paper, pencil are different than talking to somebody who says, "Hey, I just, I wanna know more about your experience." So...
So, I wanted to say a couple things, but the first thing I wanted to ask is, do we have in place, in the meantime, in between time, some type of emergency certification or out-of-field teaching incentives, particularly for special education?
Incentives? Like extra pay? You wanna talk a little bit about where we're going?
You know, generally.
Very generally.
Generally, right now. One of the things that we have looked at is, if a position is hard to staff every year, what can we do to incentivize that position? And not only just, you know, it's not always about putting more money, you know, throwing more money at something. Sometimes it's about, you know, offering the support that goes with that. And so, that's, I think that, I'm not prepared tonight to announce anything yet, because I wanna talk with a few teachers. But I think we're gonna be doing that more often, and the public's gonna see that.
Right.
Actually, very shortly, that we're gonna try a group to, one that, you know, we have a couple spots that are just nearly impossible.
Well, I know that nationally, we're having issues with teacher attrition, specifically in lower socioeconomic demographics. So, that's a national trend. I do also think that our national ethos needs to change with regard to valuing teachers. And I know, I believe that all of us here on the board does that. Again, I think as a community, we could do more to appreciate our parent educators, our parent volunteers, our school-building administrators. Because until our national and state ethos changes, ethos in terms of how we articulate, how we appreciate those in education, you know, and, like you said, support. But you have to see it, hear it, and feel it. So, I hope that in Des Moines, they're listening and seeing, and that they respond in kind to our teachers and to our marginalized populations. Because the reality is, our landscape is changing demographically. That's gonna happen. That's not gonna change. So, hopefully, we will get community members who are interested in going to you and I, to our teacher education. I know that the University of Northern Iowa and Hawkeye Community College is being responsive by looking at, focusing on what we need here locally, as well as statewide. So, I'm excited about that. That won't help us in the meantime and in between time, but, you know, business and industry, hopefully, we can look at some emergency certification for that.
We had an opportunity to speak with the administrators this morning and talk about making sure that we show our teachers, all of our employees, how much we value their work, and provide as much support as we can to make them feel valued and have the resources that they need to be successful with our kids.
So, are we looking at different organizational structures or approaches that, you know, maybe in special needs in particular, where it can be kinda stressful, where you have more than one teacher, or sharing, or is there, are there numerous models that we're exploring? In other words, can we, if we're more flexible, would that make it not an easier job, but a less stressful job in some ways?
Yeah, one of the things that we did, and actually, the board, I can't remember if the board had to approve the contract for Life Share, or if, I can't remember if it was them, or if it was under, it wasn't, it was a fairly minimal amount. But we had hired a consultant company that had some success in looking at a variety of districts across the nation. And so, we hired them to come in. They visited special needs classrooms, they met with us just recently, last week, they did a four-day professional development experience for our teachers in behavior classrooms. And so, I actually went to that. I know Charles, Dr. McNulty went to that as well, and it was amazing training. And so, we talked, you know, we talked with people and said, "What is it that would help you?" They, we have special needs coaches who are working alongside, we have co-teaching opportunities. So, I think, I would say, in the last three years, we have really changed up things. And I think as a result of our contract with the Life Share company, I think that there will be more to come, because they're kinda walking the walk with us. Would you add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that Life Share did a robust professional development that was very inclusive of our professionals and their, and the context of their work. Because it can be a demanding position. But I really felt like they had built a team process amongst our programs to serve our young people. And, you know, and honestly, I actually had connected in with a former colleague who had Life Share in a previous district in very similar circumstances and had remarkable success. So, every context is different, but I think that our special education services are being proactive into engaging our young people in the needs that they have today. And I think it's a behavioral therapeutic model that I think will be refreshing and will also create some longevity in service for our staff.
Dr. Smith, what would you, what percentage do you think of our teachers are actually products of our school district?
No, I don't remember, but, you know, Tira can remember. We asked that on the first day of school last year, when we brought everybody back, and I said, "Stand up if you went to Waterloo Schools." And I remember, the number was, there were a lot of people standing, so...
I don't think so. I wasn't there, also.
It would be different based on different, you know, if you looked at, you know, teachers, administrators, custodians, paris. Certainly, there would be a different percentage for every group, but there were a lot. I don't even know if I would venture to say, I mean, do you think thirty percent, twenty-five percent? What, what do you, it was a lot.
It was a significant number, but I...
I mean, it wasn't half, by any means, but there were quite a few people, so...
And do we know about the teacher loan forgiveness? I know, I don't know if that's a state or a national thing, and, well, we don't know if it's getting ready to change.
It's state. I sign the forms, I sign forms every week.
So, that's something that if you're currently an educator, look into, that teacher loan forgiveness, if you're considering coming into it, that's an incentive as well.
I just wanted to kind of, I know that you wanna move on, but on a positive note, I know that we said that we were encouraging our administrators to support teachers, support the other, the other, to support supportive staff and things like that. And I don't want it to be heard that that was not already happening. As I think that that already, that happens, the buildings that I've been in, you can see the familial atmosphere that each of the buildings have. So, that is already happening. And as someone who does diversity training, you can never say things more than one time for people to get it. I mean, as teachers, we know repetition is what gets it. So, I just, I just don't wanna be heard like, "Oh, this is not new. This is what we do." And evidence of that is even, like, we support the district so much that Stephanie has decided to go back into a building by choice, you know, to support our district, and has already done, doing amazing things before the kids even get there. So, that's just, I just wanted to say that out loud. I almost started crying, Steph, sorry.
I wasn't trying to rush you at all, so, this is important. I mean, this is the most important work we do, is, and I totally agree with what Lyle said, is that, you know, we have to make sure that we have the best people possible in front of our kids on next Thursday, when they show up at the front door. So, and I think it's good that it's on the radar, that we do have to look at what's going on, is there, not just externally, but internally, if there's factors that are affecting what's happening, then we need to be addressing that, so...
And we all have to be ambassadors for our district.
Yep.
Teachers, administrators, parent educators, parents. Have you ever thought about teaching in Waterloo?
Yeah.
It's a good place to work.
Absolutely. So, we got thirteen people out there that just need to call Bev tomorrow and say, not, maybe not call you. How about get online?
We'll take a call.
We'll take a call, whatever it takes.
Absolutely, a call is fine.
So, all right, thanks, Dr. Smith. Lyle, did you have anything else? Anybody?
No, thank you.
Okay. Great, then, seeing no more discussion. All those in favor, then, of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is Item E, on page twenty-five. And this is the grant from the Iowa Department of Education. And I think Susie Lund is here, and that recommend, you wanna read that recommend? The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts the SDI grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the Iowa Department of Education, as outlined. Somebody move that?
Some of those.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And discussion. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Susie Lund. I'm the Special Ed Coordinator for Waterloo Schools, and I am pleased to talk with you about this grant that we received from the Iowa Department of Education. Last year, well, two years ago, the state wrote a state personnel development grant geared toward improving specially-designed instruction for students with individual education plans, or students on, in special education. The first year was devoted to looking at specially-designed instruction and developing a framework in which teams can look and improve what they're doing to... in which teams can look and improve what they're doing to teach students with IEPs. The second year, we had usability sites were identified around the state. We, and those sites actually were in four different areas. One was K-3 literacy, one was pre-K, one was significant disability, and one was assistive technology. Our district got two of those sites. We had one for significant disability and one for assistive technology. So that was last year. So they learned, the state learned, that these usability sites had, well, we had quite a bit of professional development in assistive technology and significant disability. And the state chose to allow the districts who participated last year to expand within our district. So our proposal was to expand the assistive technology site. We were at Pointer Elementary and expand that to East, West, and Expo. And then the significant disability, we were at Bunker Middle School last year. And so now we'd like to expand that to Kittrel, Lou Henry, and West High. Each site would get $5,000, which is why there's $40,000. You can see that on your face.
And so like, some of the schools that are listed twice, like West High would get the $5,000 for the assistive technology and then the $5,000 for significant disability for each, each of those two programs.
Mm-hmm. And the strands have different professional learning. So each site identifies an instructional coach, and we have our special education instructional coaches at those sites who will be the instructional coaches. And then there's also, depending on the team, they identify who else will be a part of their, of their SDI team. So significant disability, we have four teachers from each of those schools who will be participating in the professional development. We're also having our speech language pathologists onboard in those teams and a variety of people. The assistive technology team, it's, it's awesome that the webs were here tonight because Angie Webb was on that team last year at Pointer. Pointer did some great things staff-wide to improve assistive technology. And so we're excited for that to happen in our high schools next year.
So what specifically design instruction, how does, I mean, isn't, doesn't the IEP already define what the student needs? What's, what's the difference?
Specially-designed instruction is what our students require to make growth who have individual education plans. The issue statewide was, what is it? What, how do we define what specially-designed instruction, quality specially-designed instruction looks like? So the state went about looking at a framework which involves diagnosing, designing, and delivering the instruction. And in the diagnose section, thinking about what assessments are we using? How are we, what else are we looking at in our process of identifying what a student needs? And then the design part is really looking at how we're designing that instruction for our students. And then, of course, the deliver is our teachers delivering that instruction and then looking at how our students are responding to that and making adjustments based on that.
Can you tell me how the schools were identified as the schools that would receive this grant? Did they apply? Were they just selected based on the number of students who would receive these, whatever? Tell me, I'm sorry.
Well, it's kind of interesting. I, I've been really active on our state's Special Ed Advisory Panel and also in the Significant Disability Task Force. And so luckily, I had some people that just contacted me and said, hey, is Waterloo willing to do this? And I said, you betcha. I found some different classrooms who were willing to be onboard. So that's how we started last year. And then this coming year, when they said you can expand in your district, and then you can have $5,000 per site, I said, well? And threw out what I was thinking, and they said, yeah. So that's kind of how it happened. There wasn't an application process.
And, and not that, not how we received the grant, but how the schools that we decided.
Oh, how we decided?
How we decided that on our schools that we were going to use these, this grant for.
Well, for assistive technology in particular, there is a part on the IEP that teams identify whether students need accessible instructional materials. So that a student might need something in a different format. So if they're not, if the student's unable to read something themselves, they might listen, or they might have adapted text. So with, when we looked at the percentage of students that have reading goals on their IEPs who have AIM checked, I hope I'm not getting way too technical. But what, what we're hoping is, a lot of our students with reading goals really should have AIM checked on their IEP. They should have accessible formats. And so we learned last year, after all this professional learning at Pointer, 80% of their students with reading goals on their IEPs had assistive technology marked on their IEP. So that's, that's way larger than any other school that we have, that 80%. So when we looked at who really probably needs to be accessing, having accessible formats, we thought, we really need to target our high school because they were still pretty low in their percentage. I can't think off the top of my head what the percentage was. But that's how we decided to pick our high schools for that targeted professional learning. For significant disability, we started last year with a teacher who was willing to get onboard and do it. That's how the, the Bunker contact started. We were able to take part in some really, just some professional learning with other districts who have effective specially-designed instruction for their students with more significant disabilities and found that, and they were taking an approach where they really were able to have our teachers work together to plan instruction, to administer the alternate assessment, and to review that data. So this next year, I also targeted different teachers that I wanted, that I thought would join in because it's extra stuff. They, they're going to need to do some extra work. But targeted those teachers who I thought would take it on and be leaders. And so the leaders, the teacher at Kittrel, Lou, Bunker, and then West High, they're going to be the leaders of those PLCs. So like, the Kittrel teacher will be the leader of the K-2 PLC, Lou Henry 3-5. So they will be getting professional learning in Des Moines, but then be bringing that back to their teams and helping improve the rest of their teams.
And I just had a quick question. In terms of the diagnosis, design, and delivery, does, does the Waterloo team, in terms of critical incidents? Because sometimes our students may have a critical incident that happens and, and they've not had an opportunity to be diagnosed by a, a mental health professional or medical professional. So does your team get an opportunity in that diagnosis, delivery, and design?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if there's, if there's a critical incident in the home, does your team, does this allow for the school to help in the diagnosis, the design, and the, and the delivery of that special education? The IEP?
Okay, I think I.
Well, just whatever the critical incident might be.
It would depend on, if a student already has, these are students who already are in special education. They already have an IEP and were working on improving the specially-designed instruction. And there was a lot of discussion at the state level around that word, diagnose. I personally felt it was a little bit too medical for what we do as educators. But that's how they decided to leave the diagnose piece. So it's not really, it's not diagnosing any kind of a disorder or, you know, like as a medical professional would do. It's looking at what are the needs of the student and then being able to, and using some assessments that would help with those and then designing the instruction around that. So I think when we say diagnose, it's a little different.
Well, that answered my question. So these are existing IEP students, not those that do not. I was asking about something.
And really diagnosing is really, in this, is diagnosing the, the child's need, not diagnosing a disability. Because we don't do that. So that's not a school, yes, right. We don't do that.
So significant disability, is that a category beyond Level 3?
That would be students with a Level 3 waiting, yes.
That is a level, that is a Level 3.
So these are students on alternate assessment, so they have a significant disability and require a great deal of individualization in assistive technology in order to make growth.
And what is assistive technology?
Assistive technology is any item that is helping a student to improve in their academics. So for example, it can be low-tech. You might have a grip on a pencil. You might have a find, like a viewer to help you isolate where you're, where you're reading. All the way up to using technology. So you'd have a text reader. So instead of reading the material yourself, you would have a reader, you would have something on your computer that would read the material to you. Word prediction. So kind of like when you're using your smartphone and there's, there's word prediction. We have similar technology that students can use when they're writing to have word prediction. Also, speech to text is another piece where you can speak into the computer and it will write for you. And then it will also read back what you've, what you've typed in. So there's a variety of different assessments that teams can use to figure out what is a format that the student needs and then writing it into their IEPs.
I'm assuming every day or every month or every year, there's different or advanced assistive technology. So.
And the difference really is, yeah. So the difference here, what she's talking about, because I know what your question is. Assistive technology, we have that across the board. We use assistive technology every day.
Right.
But this is assistive technology to, to level the playing field for a child who absolutely needs it. So there's a difference between instructional technology that's helpful for us versus assistive technology that a student, without it, a student cannot learn. And so when we do an IEP goal, Susie and her team, they're looking and they're saying, what does this child do? Do they need this assistive technology in order to be able to do grade-level text or, or to perform like their peers?
Whatever that alternative assessment is, because all of these students have an alternative.
But.
Well, actually, it's a little bit different. That's where this gets a little, a little muddy because the assistive technology piece is for any student with an IEP.
Okay.
The significant disability is, yeah, and we can, and we infuse assistive technology into significant disability all the time.
Okay.
So.
I got you.
Yeah.
So, so who has the catalog of assistive technology? And I assume, again, that it changes.
Well.
All the time.
What we've done is we've done a review of different form, or different, different platforms that allow for text-to-speech, speech-to-text. There's also another, a format that allows us to reduce the readability level. So if, if a text is at a 11th grade level, for example, there's some technology that allows you to reduce that to an 8th grade level, for example. And so what our teams did, what our Pointer team did last year is they looked at how much all this stuff costs and what is the best technology to choose at the time. And so they went ahead and chose some formats from Don Johnston to, to work on using.
So is AEA involved? Do you think this is an area that AEA ought to be the ones that keep track of, again, this catalog of what's available? Each individual school can't keep up with everything new coming out, I assume?
Right. And I think that the effort of the assistive technology side really is helping schools to see that they have a lot of tools at their fingertips that they can use. I know that when I first joined this district five years ago and was helping teams problem-solve different assistive technology, the, the teams would say, whoa, 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 we didn't call the AEA. And so then I joined in the AEA assistive technology team. And we decided, you know, there's certain things that we don't have to call the AEA for. We need to make sure that we do everything that we know. And then when we run out of our options and we think, okay, this is still not helping, then we reach out and we try to get some additional, additional information from our AEA staff.
I would think it would be the other way around, where the AEA would, would inform all interested parties, this is what's new and this is what's working.
Sure, they do that, right.
This year, these are your choices, instead of schools kind of.
Well, and we definitely partner with the AEA on these grants. Like, our, our coach last year was an AEA member who was on the Pointer team. So, so we have, we, we work in partnership with our AEA so that we can provide these materials for our students.
And if a school district already has technology that they've purchased and we've already, we, we may go to that first. But it is truly, the professional development, our teachers are constantly learning about what's out there. We have reps from the AEA in the buildings all the time, I mean, on a daily basis. And so you're right, it is a give and take, but it's not that we go to them every single time and say, hey, what would you, what do you have available? Because quite honestly, a lot of the things we already have. So if we're, if they're, if the software's here, if the technology is here, if the hardware's here, we're going to go to that now. If it doesn't work, you know, for the child or it doesn't meet that child's needs, then absolutely, we're going to go to other people to, to.
And if I could add to that, I think what is, the real issue now is that although we have strong partnerships with our AAAs, we have such access to information and we have such expertise in our district that, you know, you can, you can find, as we know on the web, research or evidence-based research that contextualizes the needs of an individual child the next day after a meeting. And so, you know, we have a very strong special education department and team that looks to meet that child's needs right away. And then if we can't do that, that's where the AEA becomes a great resource.
All right, thank you.
Well, Susie, I just also want to point out, I appreciate your time and efforts and, and note that the state chose to not expand this program and only allow those districts who were currently involved. And it says a lot to you and our staffs, staffs from those two schools last year. But you know, these eight schools that have agreed to do this and their teams, I think that's wonderful.
I fully agree. I appreciate all the effort there. I know, being a Lou Henry parent, you know, there's quite a bit of need in that building and, you know, just the things you're doing to, to give everybody equitable education is just amazing. So.
Level the playing field. It's great. So.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to the Department of Education also because what better way to maximize our learners' engagement than to allow those buildings to know specifically what we need? So kudos to, to writing for this and, and thank you to the state for.
Paying for it.
For granting that. Thank, yes.
And it is our job as a district to make sure that if it's happening in one, one building that through the PLC process like Susie mentioned, getting, getting other teachers to have access to what the learning is. You know, if we're learning that something is a really good benefit for kids, then we have the obligation to make sure that that spans our whole district. Because it shouldn't matter which building you're in, that, that you should have access to those great ideas all across the board, so.
So one, one last question. And do we transfer students to these sites?
No.
To take advantage of these programs?
No, they're the lead PLC, they're the lead teachers are going to share it with all the grade levels from that district. That was the question that I asked that she answered. So these are the leads for those particular grade levels in special education. And so then they will take that learning as they would anyway and spread it through their whole team. So it would be, all of the schools would be involved. So it's just, they just happen to be housed in those buildings.
Right.
But they would be using this, like Dr. Lineman said, for all kids.
All K-2.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, yeah.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the grant from the Iowa Department of Education, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item J, which is on page 40, I can't see, I drew over it, 40, on our agenda. And this is the Communities and Schools of Mid-American Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU. And I know that Ms. Turner, our Executive Director of Student and At-Risk Services, is here this evening. I'm going to go ahead and get this motion on the table. And that is that the Board of Education approve the Communities and Schools Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding for the 2017-2018 school year at a cost of approximately $50,000 for each school to work with our students.
Some of.
And a second? Excellent. And I'm sorry, Ms. Mohorn and Mr. Bauer, I know you're both here too, from Carver and from Central. So didn't mean to neglect you.
That's okay.
So I'll give the floor to the three of you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're excited once again to offer an opportunity to enter into agreement, an MOU, MOU with communities and schools out of Kansas. This is the second year they've approached us wanting to continue our cooperation, collaboration, and working with our students. Our new principals, Stephanie Mohorn and Ross Bauer, I thank them for already beginning the planning process for working with this, with this agency. I also have to point out, you know, someone asked to. you know, someone asked today, how many of our teachers actually are rooted and come from our district? They both do. May not be home, but he returned. So in his heart, this is home, and we welcome him back to work, the opportunity of working with communities and schools. Anything the two of you like to add?
I can just speak for both of us to say that we've already had our communities and school people starting working at registration. They were there and they were making telephone contact with parents for the seventh grade shot. That's mandatory. And we had the list of students that hadn't had that yet. So they're already making contact with parents to see how can we help, to make sure that you can attend on the first day with this, with this new state law. So they're, they've already jumped in even before school starts and started working, started working with us.
Our expectation is to work with our tier two, tier three, and our tier one students, all the way from group interventions to one-on-one specialized interventions. It's an opportunity to get to know parents and other community agencies within our community, and we welcome this opportunity once again this year and ask for your approval.
Can you give us an idea how many students we're talking about in each of your buildings? Do you have a sense? I know each year it would change probably, but.
That they work with one-on-one or just total in our students?
I would say total, not just the one-on-one.
I'm projected for 535 at Carver.
Okay.
And we're at, we're at 494.
Right. But I'm talking about, communities and schools will, will touch each one of your students?
In one way or another. I can speak for Carver. Our communities and school person, people, or person helps with the back-to-school night, with the parent engagement nights, with the things like that, which touches all of our kids.
Right.
In addition to the small groups. He does, he works with attendance, so that, works with the chronic attendance and things like that. So that's a, you know, a portion of our kids.
Yeah. Thank you.
And a lot of the services that they offer is to reach out to community agencies to bring those services in within our buildings. So it could be anywhere from one student to a group of students. And that's the specialty of the program.
And I think another thing to point out, because we, since we're talking about people that are from the district that are raised in the district, I know at Central is a former student of mine from the Waterloo schools. So.
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know about Carver.
You mentioned, you mentioned a new state law. Can you expand on it?
I bet Cora can.
I'm hoping.
The new immunization law indicates that all seventh graders and twelfth graders are required to have an immunization before we begin school. We've had a lot of publicity about it. We've actually had Covenant Hospital, Dr. Wright and his team onsite at registration, offering to give the shots. We've had many parents step up and get the shot already. So we've had this opportunity to work with the medical field in order to bring everything aboard and get things done.
It's the menaducacal.
Yes.
That they're now requiring. So if you're, and they're tearing it in, I'm only saying this because I have a 12th grader, so I've got them posted. And both my kids got their shot. Yes. But you have to, if you're entering 12th grade, you're born after September 20th of 1999, there's some real specific guidelines. You only have to have one dose, but you have to have that before the first day of school. And then seventh graders, is, they have to have two. So they're working to try to start with seventh and 12th, those entering, and then catch everybody else.
And seniors, if they have one shot, they're giving them a 60-day grace period.
After the age of 16.
Yes. I have to give a kudos out to Black Rock County Health Department, because they've actually looked at our total enrollment, prepared lists for our buildings, given us the information to reach out to parents. And that's been very helpful for us to get this job done. So students can enter on the first day.
So are there exceptions?
There are some exceptions. There's a medical form that has to be signed by a doctor. I know there may be some type of religious exemption, but that's something the medical field gets to determine and assist us in making sure that we follow the rules. I also note for parents out there listening to me, for back-to-school night on the middle school at Hoover on the 23rd, we're gonna have Dr. Wright and his team there. And on, at Carver, we're gonna open the secessory so that we can meet the needs of students that may not have that shot at this time. And we actually have shots available to give out that night. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. And the communication from our district, I'm telling you what, I have gotten that thing so many times, but it's great. You, so, we all need multiple ways of being reminded. So that's, it's very important. So, yeah. Is there anything further?
I just wanted to add how important this is. And, and thank you very much, because this helps with our completion rates. It helps our students stay in school. You know, any help that we can get from an, an agency, a grant or whatever, to, to help meet the needs of our students is awesome. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And they're a great organization. This is a national organization that does stuff in high schools. I mean, I, I actually just spent the weekend with a friend of mine who works in Texas, in Austin, Texas, in communities and schools. And he said, do you guys have any of that going on? And I said, funny enough, it's on my board agenda on Monday night. So, yeah, it's great. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then all those in favor of approving the Communities and Schools of Mid-American MOU, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to item M, which is on page 76, the next item on our agenda, which is the Devonshire Demolition Project. And I know you three gentlemen in the front row have patiently been waiting. Oh, I can't, see, I should not, I apologize. See, I shouldn't be allowed to sit up here because I can't see behind the monitor. So.
Just need to raise the chairs up just a little bit here.
Jeepers. I'm, I'm failing miserably at this. All right. Well, the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept the recommendation of Envision Architecture and award the bid to Lehman Trucking of Waterloo, Iowa for the base bid of $107,700 for the Devonshire Demolition Project as presented.
Some mood.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion. These bids were opened a week ago, Thursday, on August 3rd. And there were five of them, I'd like to point out. I know it's very important to us that we receive more than one or two, and we did receive five. This one was by far the lowest. I don't know, Mr. Coughlin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing more than we were happy with the number of bids that we got and we were happy with, with the lowest price. So, and this is the same firm that took down Edison.
Okay. And we can confirm that the basement is, will be removed for, yeah.
Yep.
Great. Excellent.
Well, the abatement's already finished, isn't it? This doesn't include asbestos removal, does it? Or does it?
No, this is not asbestos removal. That's a separate contract.
Yep. And I said basement. I didn't enunciate.
I thought you said basement.
Basement.
I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Dabbs asked that question about will the basement be left? And I said, yes, this demolition takes care of everything. So and the fill and all of that. So.
And also nice to see some.
Abatement, basement.
Nice to see some local companies also getting in and bidding here, a couple of them so. And in this case, one of those bids, so.
And we are very anxious to continue to work with the community and be in good neighbors, I promise. So we care about, you know, making sure that we honor our word of taking this building down. So I'm very happy to have it on our agenda tonight.
And leave the site, and I.
Right. Yeah, presentable. And, yeah. All right. Well, is there any further discussion? Then seeing then, all those in favor of approval, approval of the Devonshire Demolition Project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item N, and it is on page 79. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve as its top priorities for the 2017 session of the General Assembly, the following resolutions. Number five, English language learners. Number six, dropout and at-risk. Number seven, mental health. And number 22, save, secure and advanced vision for education.
Some moved.
Thank you.
That was Rhonda.
That was Rhonda that so moved, and Jessie who seconded. Excellent. And discussion. I just want to say for our viewers at home who, who may not be able to see this exhibit, obviously, that the Iowa Association of School Boards asks school boards every year to weigh in on those issues that they would like to see given focus and/or attention specifically when dealing with the legislature. So the list of priorities is certainly long and varied depending on which, which district you're in. But for our district, we felt that those, these four priorities, and you, and you don't get to pick 20 priorities. You know, they ask you to keep it to a couple. I think we're pushing it by picking four. But certainly those four initiatives on making sure that there is funding and adequate supports for, for those four things were very important to our board. And these have not changed drastically from last year. They've been basically the same. But certainly I'd welcome any comment. I know Lyle, you were gonna say something, so.
I was just gonna, these aren't intended to be prioritized, are they?
No. Nope. It was just to give us your, your few, but not one, two, three, four.
They were actually in the order that they were listed. So it's numerically Resolution 5, 6, 7, and 27. So.
Right.
My priority would probably be opposite.
Twenty-seven, seven, six, five.
Right, flip that, right. Go to the, yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yes. There were 30 different priorities that they sent us. So.
And actually, the public can log in and look at those too. I know that many of them probably don't have it in front of them right now, but go into our Waterloo website. They can check on, click on Board of Education and you can see in the agenda, it does start, you have to scroll all the way down to page 80.
Right.
But they are all there and you can see what the choices were.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And the reason this is, is important, so if you have any auxiliary, if you're in any auxiliary organizations that have education as, as one of your, you know, hallmarks, you can look to see if it's in alignment with our school district. So if you're going to be lobbying in Des Moines or nationally, you can kind of look to see what wording we already have. You can look to see what the, what the national and the statewide data is to help you, you know, with, with whatever your talking points might be.
Exactly.
So these are the four that we've selected as a district. But talking to a lot of constituents, you know, the, the ELL, the dropout, and mental health, and the, the penny tax is also very important. So yeah, take a look at this and see if it's in alignment with your, with your church auxiliaries or your community auxiliaries. And it, it'll be very helpful.
Great point. So, all right, anything further then on those? Awesome. Then all those in favor of approving the IASB Legislative Action Priorities, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. And that concludes the action items on our agenda this evening. So we'll move on then to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I guess I would just, continuing on with the legislative priorities, the other thing I think is kind of interesting to mention about that is every educational entity or organization will do its own set of legislative priorities. So ones that the public, if you were really interested in law and, and the legalities of this, I think it would be good for you to look up some of the other organizations. And I might suggest, this is, this is the IASB, right? So this is Iowa Association of School Boards, but there are other, there's a, an organization called SAI, which stands for School Administrators of Iowa. They do their legislative priorities. There's a, the Teacher Union, which is Iowa State Education Association, ISEA. You can look up to see what their legislative priorities. I think it's really good for public to see what different groups are really, are really, and I'm gonna use the word fighting for, because that's really what happens. I think about two years ago, something just absolutely amazing happened in our state, that whether you were a school board member, whether you were an administrator, or whether you were a teacher, there was this conjoining of legislative priorities. And many of them you will see across every group. That's sort of unheard of, because we've always thought, well, administrators want one thing, and the teachers want one thing, and the school board members, now they want something completely different. That is not the case anymore. So I think that is a, you know, and we could, you know, we couldn't even do something on our website to look at the different priorities of the different organizations that represent the state of Iowa. But I just wanted, wanted to make that comment. The, the only other comment I have is, is about back-to-school. And so the very first thing I'm gonna do, Tara and her team did these amazing, and I know I have way more than I need, so I'm just gonna pass them this way. And then Michael, if you would, when you get them, if you want to take them out into the, I have one, will you take them out and make sure everybody gets one? Because I'm actually gonna give you a little bit of an assignment, just like I'm gonna give our staff an assignment. So everybody has these little flyers that came out of the School and Community Relations. Yep, you can be my Vanna White here. It just says, welcome back to school, Waterloo Schools, first day of school, Thursday, August 24th, see you in class. And the reason we did this, we have, you know, we, we never want to say that we have any issues. We never want, nobody ever wants to say that. Families don't want to say that, schools don't want to say that. But the bottom, the truth is that we have for a long time been missing a lot of students on the first day of school. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say hundreds. Hundreds of kids do not come to school on the first day of school. Kids, families, community, we need the kids in school on day one. So my assignment for each of you is to take at least one of these. And if you need to duplicate it, or if you need more copies, Tara has them by, by the, yes, boatload. We are giving these out. I'm asking you to take it to a neighbor or to post it somewhere in our community. If you, if you go to a restaurant, ask them if you can post it. If you have somebody in your church, wherever you go, Bridge Club, wherever it is, make sure that you're asking. It is on Facebook, absolutely. We have it. Tara is doing, you know, share it. It's really important. And so I'm, Andrew, I, I, you know, I never ask you for anything. That's not true. That's not true, is it? I'm asking that we, we can get that word out, that we need our kids in school on August 24th. And I mean, all kids, not just 10,000 of them. We need all kids, all 11,000 kids, first day of school. We don't want to add 1,000 kids week by week by week. We want them in school the first day. So please, everybody, hang it up around, I mean, my, my vision would be that we have, we have 1,600 staff members, my, my hope, and, and seven board members. So I would love to have 1,607 flyers hanging somewhere in our community or given to a neighbor. Or if you, you know, if you have a neighborhood and a neighbor that you see on the first day of school and you know that they have not, last year they weren't in school on the first day, please take this over to, and compel upon them, tell them how important it is that they be here. I don't know how much more passionate I can be about this topic. We need our kids in school. So, community, whoever's out in the audience, you got your assignment as well. So does the board. So make sure you get those out. And then my last thing is just a thank you to, as we approach school next week, our teachers come back, our, actually, all staff comes back on Monday, Thursday, our students come back. I, I just cannot not thank the people who, who did the lion's share of the work over the summer to get our buildings ready. Our custodians are amazing. And every year I go out into the buildings and I think, there is no way this building's gonna be ready. And every year it comes together. You go out now and you're, you're seeing the finishing touches on, on buildings, wax, that kind of thing. So custodians, thank you. Our technology staff, they do so much during the summer. They do a lot during the year too, but for the summer, they, that's, that's kind of their go time, to make sure all of the computers get a thorough checkup and reloading and, and cleaning them up. Secretaries have, have worked very hard over the last, well, they came back on August 1st, but they have worked really hard. And we had this district-wide registration recently, which was amazing. I got great feedback from that. Those, those are things, and administrators and a variety of people. And I've been out in buildings and the teachers are back and working in their buildings. So thank you to all of the people who make, make the first day of school possible. And you have your assignment. We all do, right? So, okay. Thank you. Yes.
All right. I lost track of whether I started left or right last time, but I'm thinking that I started with Jessie last time. So I'm gonna go this way and I'm gonna start with Lyle on the right. No, I really do try to pay attention to it. So, all right, Lyle, comments from board members?
The only thing, I'd just like to piggyback on this first day of school thing, because it doesn't just affect the hundreds of kids who don't come. It affects all kids, the thousands that do come, because you can't finalize your, your, your classroom. So you have your two weeks, sometimes three weeks into the year before you have quality numbers upon which to.
Base.
To base class sizes and add or subtract teachers. So, so it really, the system doesn't start until virtually all the kids are, are there.
Thanks, Lyle.
And I know I gave up my turn, but I wanted, your comment is so great, because Andrew can tell you that very often we have to hold off on those first day numbers, because if we told him on the first day, the community would panic and they would say, oh my gosh, you only, where did all the kids go? They're coming. So we hold off on that because of that. So if they come the first day, Andrew, you can get that data to our public and let them know where we are.
Andrew.
So take your flyer.
She's giving you lots of marching orders. I'm hearing it. Yeah, okay. All right, Rhonda.
Well, everybody pretty much, the first day of school, you know, I'm not gonna get into how the review of the literature talks about how the first day of school helps improve retention and all that. You know, I, I kind of care about all this stuff, so I'm a nerd and I read it. But can I ask, so for those parents who might have transportation issues or other issues or reasons that they can't register their kids, is there a number or point of contact here that they can call to help get their kids registered?
You know, I'd probably start with their school. And we have counselors on staff, we have family support workers, we have a variety of staff. We have at-risk staff. You just heard, talking at Carver and Central that we have, we have communities and schools. We have people who would help. So if they would just communicate with us and talk with us, we would love to help them out with any barriers to getting their child to. us, we would love to help them out with any barriers to getting their child to school on the first day.
That's right. Because don't let, you know, not having supplies or anything like that get in the way of you starting.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Figure it out. Absolutely.
Okay, Angie?
So, piggyback on first day of school, super important. Just in case you, repetition is my, if I had a glee with the word, repetition is it for tonight. The other thing is, we do have a school board election coming up pretty soon. And if you want to know who is running and learn more about them, there is a candidate forum that will be held here in this room on September fifth at seven. So, please come, attend that, get information. If I were going to tell you who to vote for, if you want me to tell you, please contact me on Facebook. I'll tell you who I suggest. And you can come and find out on your own.
Reclaiming my time, I want to add to that. Elections have consequences. Please get out and vote. On what day, Angie?
September 12th.
Thank you.
September 12th. Tuesday. Okay, good. All right. Anything else? All right, Jesse.
By the way, I was, I missed the last meeting. So, I couldn't have been first last time.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
I was in Georgia. So, unfortunately, I'd rather have been here. I would have rather been here.
There's been too much time between meetings.
Yes. I have free items. Should take me wrong. District-wide registration, feedback from my household was great. And I liked the idea of, you know, it gives a very equitable registration for every school, every family. And it still surprises me, but maybe you shouldn't by this point, that how many people, when they first go register their kids, even from middle school and high school, don't know where their kids' attendance zone really is. It's pretty surprising that, oh, I thought my kid went here. No, it's actually this location here. But by having it in one building, it's easier redirecting trying to send them across town to some other location, or to a new community, you know? It's, they show up there. So, I think it went great. Feedback here was pretty good from my house. Other one, there is a, East High has a seven, eight, I think it's an eighth-grade AAU team, football team, that's doing a preseason. Yeah, I think they got some seventh graders on it because I recognize a couple of names. The goal was to have one at West and East Bowls. I don't think West was missing some bigger kids. So, they opted not to do it. But they played their first game Sunday and won. So, congratulations to that group of eighth graders, seventh graders. So, we're getting a few games in before middle school season starts. So, you know, get some positive news for the future of that program there. So, shout out to them. And then, just, I must be getting old because, well, I think, I see cars in the parking lots and kids driving. And, you know, and I was like, just please slow down and think about the kid that's in, you know, the undercar in the parking lot, or the kid walking across, or little kid. So, to all the students coming back that are driving and parents driving and whatnot, you know, just be mindful, be careful, let's get everybody to school safe and get everybody home safe. And like I said, I used, probably didn't pay attention much more. And now, I think I'm getting a little older. It's like, slow down. And, you know, there's probably my grandparent or something going by or something.
Can I add to that? So, is there a way with cities' public safety to kind of mesh those messages about the first day of school so that in the newspaper and everything, the community is aware about the traffic and all that? So, we need to really get that in the newspaper about, especially work with public safety.
Be patient.
Well, I'm asking, Angie.
Every time, every story I've heard is been, oh, my gosh, elementary school parking lot is crazy. Didn't get the first middle school kid. Middle school parking lot, I thought elementary bad. And then they get to high school. And it's like, oh, my gosh.
Students driving for the first time.
Yes. That's, I just, they just, they're worrying a little bit. It's like, slow down.
Very good advice. Very good advice.
Andrew, we'll just write it, and you can...
Exactly. Andrew, in case you didn't know, the first day of school's next week. It's August 24th. I think we've all said it now. So, is there anything further, Jesse?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Anything further from the board? All right. I'm going to, I'm not going to, I said it again, August 24th, first day of school. Can't wait to see you. All right. And our next meeting will be here in the boardroom in August, on August 28th. So, maybe we'll have some numbers by then. They're going to be awesome. So, with that, I would entertain...
At six P.
At 6:00 PM, we're moving off of our summer start. Exactly. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.
We are over at Greenbrier.
But I got to pick up my granddaughter, who events there. That's her aunt's house.
Yes, we do. And I'm going to just check my... I said, new teacher institute. I got Greenbrier, main room.
I always forget, like, to tell her kind of what these resources are going to be. She's so embarrassed. But like, I was like, put your privacy on your kids, dude.
This is your registration petition, year fifteen, sixteen. So...
Yep. Well, I got to go pick up Anna right now. So, we got to go. Because she's got done at dance at 6:30.